And Chippewa nations collectively known as Williams treaties First Nations. Which are Curber Lake, Rama, Iowa, Alderville, Scugog Island. Bosale and Georgina Island First Nation. We acknowledge the shared presence of indigenous nations throughout the area. And recognize its original indigenous inhabitants of its lands and waters since time immemorial. Um, uh, motion to adopt the agenda unless there are any changes to the agenda or additions. I haven't heard of any, so could I have a mover in second or two? Adopt the agenda. Moved by Jackie.
Sure.
Okay. And uh, seconded by Paul. Alright. Any declaration of conflicts of interest? I don't see any or I haven't heard of any. Um, the consent agenda which consider which in um encompasses the adoption of the draft ministry in the last way to a meeting. The librarians report. And the circulation. Any questions on any items on the consent agenda that you want to bring forward off the agenda? Seeing none, could I have a motion to move and second the consent agenda? Bye. Lisa's got her hand up. Thanks, Lisa. And. And well, thank you, Walt. All in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. Okay, Andrea?
Alright.
Let's talk about financials.
So, um, so um, you have the updated till the end of November budget in your board package.
Yep.
Um, you'll still see that the provincial funding is showing a zero. Uh, on the CEO list serve, a few people have started to receive their um, clog their provincial um. Money, but it's sort of a few have most haven't. So they, it kind of staggers in throughout December. So. We still haven't got our check, but um, we assume that they've started to go out. So.
Not out of the ordinary. They always wait for the last minute, don't they?
Yeah. The end of the month.
Your wife or a lot of the family.
Um, you can see wages and benefits that were significantly under budget and think we all know the reasons for that. Um, one thing that we chatted about this morning uh, under the cereals budget, you'll see that that's quite under budget. Um, that's publication cereals kind of midway down in the list. Um, that's because we made the decision to stop with our um, magazine to purchase magazines um. Earlier near the cost savings measure. So uh, the figure that you see is for our local newspaper subscriptions. We are also um, expecting another invoice to come in for our microfiche. We haven't received the invoice or the um. Um, some microfiches from twenty twenty-three. So that's. Mostly it's because I'm not getting magazines, but um, we're still moving on that. Um, that's pretty much what I, in terms of the highlights. Uh, thank you to our elected members who passed the budget uh, this morning.
Yes, our budget's been approved.
Thank you. Um, and just a note for this group, it did come up in Andrea Robinson's budget presentation, but they did um. Receive some last minute information about the WSIB premium rate. And CPP adjustments. Um, so those were factored into the version of the budget that was passed this morning. Um, so for the library, that uh, difference in amount was four thousand uh, six hundred and ninety-two dollars. That brings our total levy request to one million, two hundred and eighteen thousand uh, and seventy-eight dollars. So that's eight thousand dollars and a bit more than twenty twenty-four. Um, and more than sixteen thousand dollars less than twenty twenty-three. So. Um, delighted. Thank you very much for um, passing the budget. It's a lot of hard work.
Any questions from anybody on the financial report?
Um, I do. About the, about the publications, the magazines. It wasn't something that we had discussed um, when we were doing the budget. I know we had discussed um. Taking out the seven thousand dollar cost of press reader.
So this was part of the uh, staffing model review. When we rigid all the positions around because it is actually labor intensive because we. Have the, I mean, um, a certain position. And we, we rigid all of our internal positions. And so that was part of that um, decision. So it's definitely laid out in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, can you help me understand how um, magazines are labor intensive?
Um, well, they come in kind of different times. They each one needs to be processed. They're not handled in the same way as um, regular materials. Like they have a manual holds. System. So they have to go kind of be sent from branch to branch for people who want hold on that particular. Item. They don't last very long. So there's just a couple of circulation. So it's a lot of. Work for not a lot of circulation. And it's something that we don't have time for in the office.
Okay. Um, so what would the plans be then for all those empty shelves?
Um, so we actually been just talking about that. So we are um, working on gathering all of the um, magazines. Of course, there, there. Aren't new ones coming in because of the postal strike. Um, and our subscriptions have lapsed now. So we're gonna gather all of the um. Magazines and use them in craft programs for like vision boards and that type of thing. And then we have, it mainly impacts die art and linen. So um, we have discussed uh, different scenarios. We're thinking um, potentially, so these aren't finalized, but we have. Started brainstorming. Um, moving the brochures in Linden. There's kind of a gray. Structure. I don't really call it the bin with lots of pamphlets in the children's area. So moving that kind of information and pamphlet stuff to the back because there's the kind of slanted shelving. So things could be. Baked out um, there. And then we talked about a few things, maybe relocating the seed library here in the back. In die art. So um, first, we're gonna gather all the um. The magazines and it's at our quiet, the winters are quieter times. So we had a chance to figure out.
Right. Has there been any feedback from, from patrons on um, on loss of this reading material?
Not yet. So a lot of our magazines are available through Libby. So uh, at the time in the summer of when this decision was made in June. Um, staff did reach out to all of the patrons who have holds um, on specific magazines. And explained that after this run of subscriptions. Were done, that we would not be purchasing magazines again. Um, and then we offered support in terms of helping people access the digital versions of magazines. So. A lot of the magazines are still available, but just in a digital format rather than a print format.
Right. Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Seeing over a hundred questions, I have a motion be resolved at the Helberg County Library Board. Accept the financial report as presented.
Sure.
Adele and Jackie. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Um. No, no business arising from the minutes. Oh, you want to talk about library policies? Adele, you have raised that issue, right?
Yes, I just, I've um. We do have a policy committee, but we haven't had a meeting.
Over a year.
Uh, since I think about June twenty twenty-three. They were going to be quarterly meetings with, I think about four policies. Each meeting. And I just think it's about time we reinstated that. I don't know um, if the board wants to choose a whole new group of people to be the policy committee or not. It is part of our mandate to, to do this. And um. I think now that, you know, you're, you've got some. Air into your wings, Chuck. But perhaps we can get going again on this.
You want to um, do you want um, Andrea to prepare something that she can bring to our January meeting? Or do you want to deal with it now?
Um, I think.
Like the list of policies that we might want to consider.
Right. I think there was, I think uh, there, on each policy, there was a list of when it was due for.
There are updates on all of them, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So Graham is actually working on going through the backlog of. Policies that have not yet been made accessible. And as they're made accessible, they're going up on the, on the website. But um, a lot of them are overdue for renewal.
Right. I mean, to, to me, um, I would think I would leave it to Andrea to choose which um. Which policies should be revisited first. And I would imagine those would be the ones that need updating.
I think the public art policy um, is one that we like to look at. And so there's certainly. No shortage of policies that we need to look at. It really is that the uh, unmentioned time.
Yeah, we did do a lot of policies when Chris was here. We were quick, very quickly.
Yeah.
Perhaps we can get ahead of the game if we, you know, if you pick the quarter five that you want us to do with right away. Yeah.
So uh, just to review in terms of who would be on the committee, I think that um, that you review.
Yeah, we were.
And.
I think Lisa was. Lisa, were you on policy?
No.
No?
No, I don't think I was on that one.
I think we need probably an elected person.
Oh, yes. Yeah.
Any one of you for interested in being on a policy committee? Fine. Look at, look at the hands going.
It's not through lack of love.
I understand that. It's through too many other things on your plate. I get it.
And I'm also in that, I'm also in that uh, same boat. I've had way too much on my plate.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I get it.
I would think that perhaps the elected officials could just do a bit of nodding and um. And the rest of us could do the heavier lifting. Is that all?
Also invested?
I'll join.
Alright, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer.
And with love. It's, it's not a sacrifice.
Yeah, yeah.
So the, so the committee will be um, Adele and myself and uh, she's had your hand up? You're on.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that if we could, uh, if we could get Andrea to go through them and say, okay. We know we have a lot to go through. So if there's a couple or three of them that basically just need a wink and a smile. Then, then we could take a couple of those. And then if there's other ones that she believes really we should be looking at, maybe we could take one or two of those. And maybe that becomes our, our, our diet for, for the, for two, twenty twenty-five. Just saying. That way we could, we could polish off the ones that need some serious stuff. If there's only one or two that we should be looking at. And then the ones that need a wink and a smile, we can kind of go through them and make sure that for the, for the purposes of compliance.
Thank you. So it's gonna be Adele, myself and Jen. Um, Jen will be the wink and smile person, but Jen, don't, don't restrict yourself to that. Please jump in and. Give us your wisdom anytime you want.
And I'll, I'll um.
And Jackie's gonna be involved? Oh, great. Okay. So there's the committee. So we'll put that in the minutes. So it's minute that I don't have a motion for that. We'll just put it in the minutes. Thank you very much for that. It's great. Um, no business arising from the minutes to the last meeting, I think. New business. Library Board meeting dates.
Yeah. So um, traditionally, we have fallen in step with the county council meetings um, on the second Wednesday of the month. With the exception of meetings in July and August. Um, one thing.
Which there are none, by the way.
Yeah, that's it. No meetings in July and August. Um, that's more meetings than we need to have. Um, however, it's um, quite common in libraries to kind of have them scheduled and then cancel them if they're not required. Because it's easier in terms of scheduling.
And we did discuss that last year, I believe, at one point in time, that at the direction of chair, we can cancel a meeting if there's nothing major on it.
The one thing, um, so it's not listed on here, but I did want to draw to your attention. I do think it is quite valuable for the board to. See our branches, to physically visit them.
Right, sure.
Um, and I, so I'm interested in. Trying to arrange something like that for those of you who are interested. I don't know whether you would want to do this instead of. Uh, one of our meetings, since you have that. Time. It would only be half a day though, for the elected.
Well, wait till the weather gets a little more pleasant. And it stops raining in the middle of December. And maybe we can, in the spring, we can set something up. So, okay.
Yeah, I, I think that we ran into the issue last time when we didn't book it far enough in advance. And it was tricky to um. Have a day when everyone was available. So maybe we could um, bring back kind of some suggestions to the.
Why don't you bring back a, a, a number of dates for the January meeting and we can pick one and we'll lock it in now. Everybody can have it. Not in the middle of the summer. I think people are busy doing other things, but perhaps early in the spring.
Yeah, or May, May, June, once the weather's better.
Okay, that's good.
How, in terms of those meetings?
Yes, oh, Paul, sorry.
I just had one question. What was the minimum number of meetings a year that we, we are required?
I'm gonna say seven, seven is what I, my memory is. Yeah.
Yeah. The January eighth meeting is tricky for staff because the library, the um, library is closed for. The, sorry, the office is closed um, over Christmas. So it um, gives us.
So you're closed from when?
Um, I have the next year's dates, but um, do you have that quickly? It'll be in the minutes from last December.
Usually between Christmas and New Year's.
The next board meeting is titled for January.
Twenty, twenty-third to the eighth.
Twenty-two.
Not to the eighth, not the first. We're back in the office on the second.
Okay. So the January meeting will work then. Everybody will be here.
Is that, e- everyone will?
Yeah, we'll all be back. I won't be. But I'm, I'm gonna zoom in for all, I'm gonna zoom in for all the meetings. Yeah.
Will there be anything pressing for the January meeting? I'm just wondering if it's one of those ones that we could possibly skip. I know that we're. Deep in budget from a lot of the days in January, but I don't know about the other members of council. I mean, the budget's already passed, Andrea. So I don't know, like, is there anything pressing that you foresee coming for the January meeting? Or is that one that we could possibly skip over?
Policy, like kind of planning out the year, but um, it's not. Press, we have, we've had a lot on our, on our um, place. Here. And so I think their team would be happy if we didn't have a January eighth meeting.
I'm, I'm down with that.
Yeah. If you want to not have the January meeting, unless something important comes up that we have to have one, which I can make the call on. You okay with that? So let's leave it like that. We won't do one on the eighth unless something important comes up.
Thank you. That's perfect.
The policy committee could meet at some other point in January.
Yeah, I think the policy committee can. And we could do it by Zoom if we wanted to, you know, so the people don't have to come down here or stuff like that. Okay, that's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, holiday hours.
Oh, so I think there is a motion for that.
Oh, there's your. Yes, there is. Sorry, here's the motion. Be resolved at the Helberg County Public Library accepts the proposed. Board meeting date, which is the second Tuesday of every month.
Wednesday.
Or Wednesday, sorry, following the uh, at four o'clock.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
We just took the eighth out.
Yeah, thank you. And those meetings will hopefully follow the, the county meeting so that we're gonna. Don't have an overlap. A mover please? Adele, seconded by Paul. Thank you very much. And all in favor? Carrie? Next meeting is when we open and close during Christmas. We already know that.
So we've uh, we decided uh, last year for this year. And so these are the twenty twenty-five dates, the, the dates that are in your um, board package. So essentially, it's the, all the stat days. And then with the exception of the Saturday, that's over the Easter long weekend. Um, and that would be for branch staff as well. So that. Um, there's a four-day weekend. So that's, we've done that for the last two years or three years.
Yeah, we have, yeah.
Um, and it's um. That it's appreciated by staff.
Okay, so I have a motion that says that it would be resolved at the Helberg County Public Library Board except for the proposed twenty twenty-five holiday hours. And we've already technically approved those previously, but um, just good for.
I think these are, so these are the ones for next year. So we approved the ones for next year.
I thought you said that we had already, okay.
Yeah.
My, my mistake. Sorry. Moved by. Lisa, seconded by Walt. Thank you, Lisa and Walt. All in favor? Thank you. Motion carried. Now, rationale versus library systems technology coordinator on posting. Want to deal with that?
Yes. Um, so uh, as requested, at the last meeting, I put together a rationale document for um, why we have proceeded with posting the. Full-time systems and tech coordinator position. Um, the detailed rationale is in that document as well as the follow-up um, uh, reply from Mike March, the director of the county IT department. So I'm not gonna go through the entire report. It's there for you to read.
And just, just as an aside, Walt, this is the information that you asked for at the last meeting. How, work with, work with Mike to get some kind of a thought process on this? So this is, this is what's coming up.
Exactly. Um, and I, I just wanted to kind of frame this by saying that um, digital literacy is. Really, really important. And it's not just important for kids to learn. It's important for people of. All ages and especially in a community like ours. We know that there's a huge amount of poverty in our. Um, our part of the, the province. And we have a, a big digital divide here. And so that's not just in terms of access to broadband, but that is access to devices. To connect. Um, the library is a key place for people to come where they can use. Free wifi. They can have good download speeds. They can get help applying for. You know, uh, a job or government program, that type of thing. Yes. And so. Um, it's very important. It's, it's uh, something that all of us need to be a citizen in this day and age. Um, the, so as I said, the, the detailed rationale is laid out for you in the report. Um, the systems and technology coordinator role is the key role on our team. That's tasked with doing the digital literacy programming, um, the workshops and. The, the delivery. So we all branch staff help question, how do I, you know, change the. Facebook privacy settings? Or how can I upload these photos to share with my mother or? Those kinds of things. But this position is specifically tasked with. Putting together a plan to meet the digital literacy needs of members of our community. Um, in the June report, we made the programming and outreach coordinator role. We took it from full-time to part-time. And so we moved this aspect of the programming. Role to the system and technology role. So it was somewhat part of the role before, but not. In terms of the direct program provision. So running workshops, going to. Uh, Wilbur Force, for example, to um, work one-on-one with people. Um, so. It's a critical role and those are tasks that our IT department um, is able to assist with. So. They helped us with a lot already, but it's not the same type of work that, that we're doing to service this need in our community. Um, so there, it is all laid out in the report. Um, I would invite you if you have specific questions.
Any questions on that report? It was fairly detailed in the communications between Mike. Is his name is Mike? Is that right?
Mike March, yeah.
Yeah, and um, and um, yeah. Sorry. Um. It, you know, if you, like, sitting here today as an example, there's a whole bunch of work that's done in preparation for this meeting in this room. That would require a tech person from the county to be here during our meeting in case something went wrong. So there's a lot of stuff that goes on behind the scenes that I think personally. We're very fortunate to have someone that's dedicated to it as part of the library system, period. And doesn't have to do anything. Whoever is doing it, he or she. So I kind of, I kind of would recommend that we accept Andrea's comments. Um, as part of the go-forward. Um, in the future, if something changes, we would consider it obviously, but I think right now we're better to stay with what we've got. Because it's working. And it's working really well. It's been proven and it's successful. And we don't have to worry about reinventing the, the whole system, if you know what I mean. So are there any questions? Can we move forward with what we've got? And, and maybe if we have to revisit it at some point in time, we will. Walt, are you satisfied with the, with the comments that you received back and forth between Mike and Andrea?
Yeah, I am. Um, but like I say, today at County Council, there was. You know, some discussion about the future, like you just said, and. Like, um, it's just, it's something I guess that'll be addressed every year for. Uh, like, money is tight. There's a lot, there's a lot of wants, a lot of needs at the county level and also at our own. Um, municipalities. So uh, let's put it this way, we have to be um, very, very, you know. Uh, previous, previous with the uh, taxpayers' money. It's uh. Um, the, the budgets are growing and growing and we just have to be really conscientious of uh, where it's all going. So. It's just not a, a given that, so if, if we can, where we can make cuts, I think we're gonna be making cuts. We, we don't want to take away services. We don't want to take away, you know, all the uh. Good work that's been done. Say, we're, we're here, we're talking about libraries, but there's so many different um. Uh, areas that could be affected. But uh, like I say, uh, the budgets are growing. So hopefully we'll get a hold on this. But I'm, 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 I'm satisfied with, but I'm just letting you know. If you listened to the meeting today, that was a message that was out there.
Yeah, thank you.
And it wasn't from me or from C E S, or it was just our whole, basically our whole council's general. Um, you know, perspective of where we're going with this.
Thank you. I, I hear what you say. Um, just make a comment, Jen, before I, I give you the floor. Um. Well, the municipal world is a whole lot more difficult than when I was many years ago.
Hmm.
And it's going to get, it's going to get harder and harder as time goes on, for sure.
Yeah, like die art's gotta replace uh, three bridges here this year, or here in the next year or two. You know, the tune of five million dollars.
You know, it would be nice if we would get some of that income tax that the federal and provincial governments get all the time. We could rely on that. Anyway, I won't, I won't get up on my podium and make the speech. Forget it. Jen, I'm over to you.
Um, thanks. Yeah, just building on what Walt said. Um. A- and what you've just said, David, it's, it, it's a changing world. Everything is getting more expensive all of the time. That is. The sole trajectory unless there are major structural changes in how libraries are financed and how municipalities are financed. Every year, it's gonna get harder and harder and harder. And I think um, what would be great to take away, having heard from this table from, and from Andrea and from David, is. What I assume to be true, which is the commitment that at every opportunity in the future, where there is a possibility of sharing roles. Where it works. Yeah, because you're not forcing. A left shoe onto a right foot, but where there is a natural opportunity in tech, in communications, in, in whatever it might be. That we can share some roles, save some money on both sides. If the commitment is, yeah, we're going to explore it until we've exhausted that possibility and then we'll make a decision. Then I think I feel very satisfied taking that message back to council so that, so that the intention is known. And um. And where those opportunities arise, both sides are gonna jump on them in, in a flash. I. Would that be a safe uh, assumption that, that the commitment is there?
Yes, absolutely. I agree a hundred percent.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's the key takeaway really, is, is that intention. Yeah.
Yeah. Alright. That's been, okay with that? Andrea?
Uh, yes, absolutely. Yeah.
Alright. Now, the twenty twenty-five work plan for the library board and CEO.
Um, so this was um, uh, added sort of at the last event. So that's something that um. Chris had when he was here, is kind of a, sort of a. It's, it's not time to develop for today. Um, but that is for the need to get on the radar before kind of a plan for the year. Um, and as well, things in terms of my evaluation and the board's evaluation of itself.
Yeah.
Little things that we need to um, get on to.
Yeah, so, so three things. The work plan, we go, evaluation. When Chris is here, Andrea and I worked on. Class form, we can work with the board, evaluate ourselves and our work. And it's not uncommon for boards to do that. It's quite common. I've done it many, many times in my career. Um, so we could pick that stuff up. I, I was looking through some of my files the other day upon Andrea, and I found some of that work. So we'll dig it out and we'll, she and I will work on it and bring it back to the board if that's okay. Okay, sounds good. And then we will have a, have to have a little session before on evaluation.
We'll be ready most of the week.
We will, yeah. Okay, sounds good. Um, anything on the municipal roundtable? I think we've, we've done that. Thank you all again very much for supporting the library today. We very much appreciate it. And we'll do.
Well, thank you very much for all of the impressive work that went into preparing this budget. Uh, never an easy thing.
That I was gonna say. Exactly.
Yeah. It was a tough year, but um, I think we did the right thing. I think it worked out well. Congratulations to you and your staff, Andrea.
Huge congratulations. And huge congratulations to the staff because um everyone has worked really, really, really hard this year. Good on Stephen.
I have a motion, the last motion. Be it resolved at the December eleventh, twenty twenty-four regular meeting in the Halliburton County Library Board now adjourned. That's always, I don't, just need a mover. Cece, you're it. You don't have to um approve it. We just have to have the motion moved. Meetings adjourned. Anything else? Everybody, I hope you have
I'll just make a a little comment, little um announcement.
Of course.
The the Arts Council is going to be teaming up the library, the um, the Art in Public Spaces Committee, of which I'm a member. Um, and I'm going to be working with Hillary on um putting together um exhibits of local artists' work in three of the branches. We're going to start with Dicart, Minden, and
Standhope.
Standhope for rotating four-month periods. We'll have uh, we're aiming for two pieces of art per branch starting in January tenth. Hillary and I have set a date to get together and actually hang the art. So there'll be some uh coordination there. So um I sent out a call to artists from the Arts Council saying that the Arts Council goes to the library. So that off we go on that. So that um I I like to have, I like the coordination of the different groups in in the in the in the county. So I'm I'm pleased to be helping with that.
Thank you, Jackie. That was great.
Also, if if I might, um, the gala was great. The Friends of the Library Gala, really, really good, fun, and just well attended and beautiful and great job.
Over a hundred and fifty people attended and with an amazing out, and the auction items were
I'll have to go to that next year. I missed it this year. Actually, believe it or not, I had COVID for eight days, two weeks ago. Can't believe it. Went all this time and I finally got it.
I had it a third time. That's why I missed last last meeting.
And I have eight booster shots.
I had them all too.
And I still got it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you know, on on that silent auction, I was a hair away from getting the banana with the piece of tape over it. But my budget only extended to four point seven million, and I think the person who got it was about five one. And I was
Oh, how disappointing.
Yeah.
I'll make you one, Jen, for free.
Anyway, everyone, have a wonderful vacation holiday season with your family and friends. We'll see you all in the new year. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care, guys. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Cece, America's Transitions debate for me, okay?
Okay.
Take care, guys.
Do we know how much money was raised from the year?
I don't have a final tally, but like, but it, but it may be great. Yeah, yeah, I think a lot of tickets.